YouTube, I guess. I've been asked to note that NCTV, Channel 45 also carries it, is my understanding. And we're also recording the meeting. Finally, if you have a cellphone on you, would you please put it on vibrate or silent? We'd appreciate your doing that. We always begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. I'd like to note, we lost a real public, a real fine person, also a fine public servant in the last week, Dave Airhawder, who served on New Beaver Borough Council for forty-nine years. And I attended his funeral service yesterday. I actually first met Dave when I was six years old. His daughter and I started first grade together. And so I knew Dave growing up. He took a lot of pride in his service as a New Beaver Borough Council member. And just did a fine job. And was a real fine human being, was a truck driver by profession. And we'll certainly miss Dave. Ninety-one years old, he's still serving on Borough Council. So we'll miss Dave, but please keep his family in your thoughts. So we'll start. Joe, could you please insert the pledge, please?
Well, I believe just, this is what I like, our United States of America, a genuine republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Please remain standing, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sinado?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here, we have a quorum. As we always do, we'll have two opportunities for public comment. One in just a few moments, and then one before we adjourn. You're welcome to speak both times. If you only want to speak once, that's fine, or if you're just here to listen, that's also fine. We do ask that you try to limit your time to about five minutes or so. And also, if you could direct your comments to county government matters, we would appreciate that as well. Item two on the agenda, we always set aside time for our elected role officers, if they have any reports or concerns. And we do have our County Controller, Dave Prestipine, with us. He's here for a bid opening in a few moments, but Dave, anything over and above that?
Nope, that's all.
All right, sir, thank you. It's good to have you here. That takes us to public comments. Let me open the floor and see if anybody has a comment they'd like to make at this time. Hearing and seeing none, we'll do this again before we adjourn. That takes us to fiscal and contractual. And we do have a bid opening today. Back on February 11, the board passed Resolution 26, which authorized the advertising of bids, or for bids, for the maintenance of the recreational areas that the county is responsible for, which would include mowing, trimming, and trash collection. We are requesting bids from contractors. And my understanding is that the bid advertisements appeared on February 17, February 21, and the resolution noted that we would open those bids today. And our county controller handles that. And for most of you are aware, we have a relatively new system that's done online, for lack of a better term. And it seems to be working well. We thank Dave for bringing this to us about a year or two ago, I think.
I think this is the second.
And it seems to work fine. So, Dave, I'll turn it over to you. Do you know how many bids we received?
We got two.
Okay, would you please proceed?
The two bids were from Beyond Corp., which is in Edenburg, Pennsylvania, and Piatt's Landscaping, which is in Newcastle, Pennsylvania. Beyond Corp., their total bid is seventy thousand nine hundred sixty dollars.
Is that seventy?
Seventy thousand nine hundred sixty dollars.
Nine hundred and sixty, thank you, Dave.
Seventy-two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars.
And that was Piatt, that's right, Dave?
Yep.
Okay. We have with us Rebecca Schaefer from the Planning Department. Rebecca, what we normally do, of course, is we would table the bids to allow your office to review them in consultation, I'm sure, with the Controller's office. And I don't know if you talk to the engineers or not, but I assume you'd like a week or so to have that opportunity. Before I would take a motion to table, though, let me see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions or comments. Thank you, Mr. Sanada.
Just briefly, Rebecca, have we used either of these two companies in the past?
We have. We have a longstanding relationship with Piatt's. But Beyond has, you know, bid in prior years, past two or three years, been a little higher, you know, so we have come with Piatt's in a while. But I will make note that maybe we will talk to Jason Mador, you know, depending on, I wanted to review it too, to make sure we're good on what we decide, whatever one decides.
That's what Chris said, we've dealt with both companies in the past.
Yes, and they're all bonded, they all have their insurance, or they would not be able to bid. So they followed on a bar guide.
Okay, just want to make sure that.
Yes.
That you're familiar with both companies.
Oh, yeah, I am, yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Thank you, Chris. I used to have to ask you if they were all received in a timely manner, but this system guarantees that, doesn't it?
It does not like, it does not like open, so that one, and once it crosses that time period.
So I don't have to ask you that many times. Okay. Dave, do you have anything else to add on this?
All right, you go on.
Okay, well, thank you both. Could I please have a motion to table these bids?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen, and may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Dave, as always, thank you very much. You have anything else for us?
I'll be up.
Thanks, Dave, appreciate it. Rebecca, thank you for being here. Next on our agenda, we have the warrant register. This one is dated March 6 of 2025. It's a listing of the bills that have been paid by the County Controller's Office. And I'll give my two colleagues time to look them over. And whenever you're ready, gentlemen, I could entertain a motion for us to accept the warrant register.
I move we accept the warrant register.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Also on our packet, we have the minutes of the March 4 Commissioners' Meeting. And once again, Chris and Dan, take time you need to look them over. And whenever you're ready, we could take a motion to adopt the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll accept, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. If there are no other questions or concerns, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Commissioner reports and comments. Mr. Sanada, you get to go first today.
Oh, thank, thank you, Chairman Vogler. Actually, very good week for me last week, weekend, into the early week. I had the opportunity to go to NACO, the National Association of County Commissioners. I represent Lawrence County and the state of Pennsylvania, along with thirty-five other commissioners for the state. We actually had an opportunity to go up to Capitol Hill last Tuesday. And we had a chance to visit with Senator McCourt, again, Senator Federley, with many of the issues that affect county government, Lawrence County, as well as all counties throughout the country. Just briefly, I think some of the issues that are important for us from the county are Medicaid, the potential cuts to Medicaid, which could have an effect on the counties, depending on how, you know, if these cuts happen, will the counties be responsible? And we don't have the financial wherewithal to do that. Another issue that was brought up at the conference, which we talked to the centers about, was the fiscal body that affects all school districts, counties, local governments. If you would take the taxes that status away, that's a huge incentive, actually, for creating jobs with small business opportunities and the flow of bonds. That would add at least two and a half to three percent of the cost of the local governments. So that was another important issue we discussed. And third most important issue is FEMA from the federal government. I know there's talk in the outer Washington about the Washington not taking care of disasters and leaving that to the state and local governments. The counties were immediately opposed to that because, I don't, where you're at, no counties have the financial wherewithal to handle a disaster. But even in Lawrence County, we haven't had one for a long time. But, you know, bridges go out, or shopping centers get taken out. The county doesn't have the ability to do that. So we rely a lot on the federal government in case a disaster does occur. So those were three, I think, of the very important issues that we discussed. So I didn't, I wasn't in the district, so I had an opportunity to attend too many things. Except, we did an Eagle Scout on, I mean, all three of us. Actually, it was interesting, there was all four of us. I'll let Mr. Kennedy, we talked a lot on that as well, since she's from his neck of the woods, and a nice girl, and I've never seen so many Eagle Scouts in one room. They came from all the counties. And just last, I'd like to just throw something out there, that would be for you, that we were brought aware of, there's a grant program out there, for the FACIT program throughout Lawrence County. It's being done by the Redevelopment Authority. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, which the business would have to match. Amy McKinnney, our down here, works on that with the Redevelopment Authority. The deadline is March 31st. And I throw that out there to all businesses throughout the county, Elwood City, New Wilmington, Newcastle, and Shannick, doesn't matter. It's to fix the FACIT, so they have to match it with twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't know if there's a whole lot of applicants at this point. I said that I would try to get that message out, to let any business know that. And if they're interested, contact Amy. And she's the person with the Redevelopment Authority, which works for us as well. So I think it's important to get, we're just trying to get that message out. I know that they sent that message to all levels of government. But, you know, sometimes some of the small businesses are so occupied in doing what they do with their business that they don't always hear about these things. So I did want to throw that out there. They have a few weeks to apply. If they have questions, to contact Amy. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sanada, appreciate it. Looks like I'm next. I concur, we had a very enjoyable Sunday afternoon in New Wilmington with the Eagle Scout recipient, Megan Blasco. And it was nice to see County Commissioner Tim McGonigal there. Megan lives in Mercer County, just above county line, in Wilmington Township, Mercer County. So I think that's why they had both, the three of us, as well as Commissioner McGonigal. Again, I'll refer to Dan if he'd like to make more comments about it. The only other thing I'll note is that next Tuesday, this board will not be having a public meeting. Next week is the Spring Conference of the County Commissioners Association, and that takes place in Dauphin County. My two colleagues plan to attend. I had hoped to attend, however, I've been called to serve on jury duty next week, so I have to stay home and do my civic duty. But I'm glad that both Dan and Chris are able to go. Gives us a wonderful opportunity to interact with fellow commissioners around the state and to hear a lot of good speakers, particularly from state government, during the course of those two days. One final note. On April, the first Tuesday in April, which would be April, actually, April 1, we've been invited, along with Controller Prestipine and Treasurer Rapone, to a noon meeting in Pittsburgh by the Marquette Company, which is our fiscal advisor for our pension fund. And again, that meeting starts at noon. So we thought, you know, if we have our regular ten o'clock meeting, that's going to be kind of really close. So we had informal discussion, but I want to get it on the record. Are you gentlemen both agreeable to us meeting at 9:00 AM that morning? Would that work for the, that would have worked for you guys?
Yes, sir.
Chris and Dan, would that be okay? So what we'll do is we could do a legal ad, changing, noting the change of time. Still have a meeting, still be on Tuesday, April 1, but we'll start at 9:00 AM instead of 10:00 AM. So appreciate your both being willing and able to do that. That's, that's all I have, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Kennedy.
Well, you guys all left it to me, but Megan Blasco, who cut the Eagle Scout. She's one of five in Wilmington's troop to get it this year. So we've got two so far, we've got three more to do. I don't know if they're all going to have a presentation like that. One young man told me he's not doing it. He's too much committed to what he's doing. He'll probably get on production, maybe get it off some. I know Wilmington's doing that, and Dr. Patton out at Melhaw. I think he has four this year. So you did four, was it? Was it four that they did out there, Chris?
Something like that.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, they've had quite a few, so. So they've been, they've been busy.
What's in the water out in Wilmington, Dan? I've never seen five.
I've never, I have worked with a few kids doing projects at Morgan Park, but never this many on the road. The one young lady that did Fayette Cemetery, getting it cleaned up badly, Lani Todd did that. Funny, she came and met with me shortly after I went from the hospital last year. So she's watched me get better. She's a nice young lady. She's really done a good job. So did Megan. She did with the kids in the Conservation District. It was a nice project. Besides that, that's it, except for yesterday, I spent a few minutes in here, and then I ran off with Ben, and we went down to Pittsburgh. Actually, went to Moon Township and Finley Township. And toured quite a few of the industrial developments down there, and met with some developers that have built that place up. It was a very interesting trip, and learned how they've done it. Saw the Megan Square Flod Amazon Center down there, it's huge. You can land a seven forty-seven on the second road. Just a nice, nice afternoon, meet some nice people. Hopefully, we can get them to come this direction. So that was the goal of the day. That's all I have.
Dan, thank you. We've noted in the past that Forward Lawrence, Economic Development Corporation, their structure is such that their board, one of the board seats is to be filled by a county commissioner. And when Mr. Kennedy took office, he replaced former Commissioner Spilgo on that board seat. And I will tell you that Dan not only puts a lot of time and effort into his role as a commissioner, but he puts a lot of time and effort into that role as well. And by the way, he's not paid for that. It's a community volunteer position, so we thank you for all of it. And you have really put a lot of time and effort into it, we thank you for that. Well, gentlemen, thank you all. Speaking of the Economic Development Corporation, I'm a little puzzled because I thought Diane Richardson was supposed to be here.
She's probably, hopefully, she's home resting. She, yesterday, she was not feeling well.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
And Ben told her to stay home.
Okay.
So we, I don't see why we can't move on, but this is pretty simple. Pretty self-explanatory what we're doing.
Well, this, this, what number would this be? Fifty? This involves the Millennium Park Project in the Shannick Township, specifically the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant. It states here that this agreement with a public taxing body is a required element of all RACP projects from a Pennsylvania budgetary office. I'll be honest, I did have a couple of questions I was hoping to pose.
Okay, well, if you wanted to.
But, but do you happen to know, is this time sensitive? Is there a deadline?
Well, they started bulldozing yesterday at the Millennium Park. That building is already going to be full when they get done with it. And when they get moving on the next phase, I know that. And I don't know if it's because of bulldozers or everyone keeps on.
So you're not sure if we wait until next? Wow, no, you know what, we don't have a meeting next Tuesday. I'd rather not wait two weeks. Chris, what are your thoughts?
Dan, is this the Steel Light project?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that because I know it's important.
Yeah, I wish they would have sent someone in Diane's place. And again, I'm sorry, she's not feeling well. But I guess because we don't meet for another two weeks, I certainly wouldn't want to stand in the way of any progress. So Dan, are you comfortable with moving ahead on this?
Oh, I'm.
All right, I'll respect that. Chris, do you feel the same way?
Dan's on board, and I know you're quite aware of the project. I think we've mentioned this before, so it's not that, I think all three of us are aware of what's going on. And you're comfortable with this, I have no question.
I, hopefully, I'll see Mr. Bush within the next week, and I.
You're going to see him on the air.
I'll pose my questions to him at that time, so. Well, this resolution, as we noted, it's an agreement between the Economic Development Corporation and the county regarding, as both Chris and Dan mentioned, the Steel Light Expansion Phase Two project in the Shannick Township. The project was awarded a three and a half million dollar grant from the Commonwealth through the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program. And one of the requirements, as we noted, is that a public taxing body is a required element. So there does have to be an agreement between the two. One of my questions was, maybe someone, maybe Vanessa, or maybe Dan could answer. Do we know if Attorney Mador has reviewed any or all of this?
He was on the email that I had sent to you guys to review the agreement.
Okay.
As far as I know, he's okay.
Okay, you didn't hear anything to the contrary? You didn't hear any concerns and solicitor votes? Okay. This is Resolution 50. Could we please have a motion for it?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any other concerns or comments? Okay, thank you, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution is Proposed Resolution 51 from our Children and Youth Services Office. Mr. Grippo, Mike Grippo is with us. And Mike, it's always nice to have you here. And number 51 is a contract, I believe, with an organization known as A Collective Consulting, and they're based out in Bucks County. This is a renewal, but what more can you tell us, please?
Okay. Actually, what happened was we had an emergency placement. You know, we didn't use them last year, these were one of the backup ones. So we had an emergency placement from another provider. So when we called around, we always start Lawrence County, Mercer, I mean, we always start that circle. But unfortunately, this was the only place that would take the child. So it got approved by the judge, and we had to place them there. And the rate from last year didn't go up, so it's the same rates.
That's good enough.
Yeah, it's good enough.
I'll see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions. No. Mr. Kennedy, any questions for Mike? Gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion for Proposed Resolution 51?
I'll make the request. But I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mike, anything else on this one?
No.
Okay, thank you. Ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sinado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mike, are you handling the next one involving Katie Kerr?
Yeah, I'm the backup, I guess.
Okay, that's good, Mr. Bob is with us as well. For those of you who have followed our meetings in the past, Children and Youth Services participates in a program known as Child Welfare Education and Leadership, Cwell. And the resolution states that it's at Pennsylvania Western University. Now, is that the new name? I always thought it was at Pitt.
Well, they, the program changed, so they have options for different colleges.
Oh, I see.
And I think this is Edinburgh.
That's right, this would be Edinburgh, Clarion, and California. I believe those three are now known as.
Yeah, C.
Pennsylvania Western University. Okay, I didn't realize that, I always thought it was strictly at.
And usually, everybody goes.
Okay.
But back then, you know, the program has changed. Back then, they would go to school and then work in the summer for two years. Every summer, come back, and then when they're off, they come back. This is the first time that we're doing it different. They're actually going to be working and taking night classes.
I see.
And so I think it's a three-year program, instead of a two-year program. But they will continue to work like they normally would. This is the first year, she's the first one of this.
And Mike, actually, if I had read a little further down, it does state in the resolution that she will participate in the program on a part-time, online basis while continuing to work full-time. So that backs up what you just said. And it states here that she will maintain county employment post-graduation for a period of time, established by her Cwell contract. This seems to have worked well with some of your other employees, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Just again, it's no longer strictly at Pitt. And she's able to do this through one of the. And you said that, you think it's in the program?
Yeah, I think either Kenny's and well, you know. And the nice thing about it, as they're developing and learning, they're, she's actually going to be supervised, right? So she can use some of the principles and techniques that she learned.
Yeah.
You know, and apply it to the caseworker network.
Understood.
Understood. But she's been with this since September 20, and she got promoted to supervisor in November, around October, November 22.
Okay. Good with about four and a half years. Okay, that's wonderful. I'm going to see if Commissioner Kennedy has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Sanada.
No.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your bringing this to us, and I hope it continues to be a successful venture. This is, and do you have anything else to add, Mike? John, anything?
It's, it's a very good program, and the worker slash student. And the worker slash student has the right to, has the preference and right to select one of, I believe, up to seven different universities.
I see.
And, and the part that is new this year is Edinburgh or Pennsylvania Western University now. They are exclusively online. They offer no in-person. But the other six universities now have added asynchronous learning, too. So Ms. Kerr will be able to work full-time, but then because it's asynchronous, she'll have the ability to select which day and time during the week after work she invests into the master's program. So it's really a wonderful program.
Well, appreciate that helpful information. And just for the record, that was John Baut speaking. He's the director of our CYS office, works with Mike. Once again, Chris and Dan, any other questions that you gentlemen might have? Could I have a motion, please, for Resolution Fifty-Two?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we appreciate your time. Thank you both. Have a great day. Thank you. Resolution Fifty-Three, you may recall, earlier in the year, we allocated some dollars from the fund, the Affordable Housing Fund that was collected in the Register of Recorders Office. And we've done this for quite a number of years. The Carpenter's Project, which is a non-denominational, intergenerational program in the Elwood City area that assists homeowners with repairs that they are unable to complete themselves with no charge to those homeowners. They are once again asking for a fifteen thousand dollar allocation from our fund. And we have the letter attached, was sent to us on March three. And the gentleman who chairs it is Connie McDonald, who many of you know. Connie, for many years, was the fire chief in Elwood City Borough. They also served a number of terms on the Elwood City Borough Council. So, gentlemen, we have before us this request. My understanding is that there are sufficient funds in this account to cover the fifteen thousand dollar request. I'm going to see if Mr. Sanada has any comments.
Oh, it's a very good program.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
None.
Okay, thank you. Would one of you care to make a motion for Resolution Fifty-Three?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you both, gentlemen. If there are no other, if there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. Resolution Fifty-Four is a budget amendment. This involves our nine-one-one office. It's a, an increase, an unbudgeted increase in their allocation from the nine-one-one grant disbursement revenue account in the amount of one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. And that will be earmarked towards the line item known as nine-one-one State Project Lawrence Incumbent Local Exchange Carrier Post-Migration Expense Account. That's a mouthful. So this budget amendment is before us. It's Resolution Fifty-Four. Do any, Dan, do you have any questions about it? Chris?
No.
Hey, would one of you wish to make a motion for it?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Before we take a roll call, you're, you're comfortable with everything?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a little bit more.
Okay. Which we're always happy to have.
Absolutely.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Vanessa, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. We have one request to transfer today from the Human Resources Office. They are asking for a three thousand dollar budget transfer from their contingency line item into that of their advertising line item. Would one of you care to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you. And I should have asked before of a motion. Do either of you have any concerns?
No.
Thank you both. It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Well, a couple of announcements. As we noted, the Board of Commissioners will not meet next Tuesday. We will reconvene two weeks from today, on Tuesday, March twenty-five, at ten AM. In this room, it's open to the public. The Lawrence County Planning Commission meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow, March twelve, has been canceled. The prison board will meet on Wednesday, March nineteen. That would be one week from tomorrow at twelve noon. In this room, open to the public. It's not listed on the agenda, but the Salary Board will convene a special meeting this Thursday, March thirteen. Do I have that right, thirteen?
Yes.
Thank you. At nine AM. The legal ad appeared, I believe, yesterday.
Yes.
And we have a few items of business that we have to address as the Salary Board. That's open to the public. Those are the announcements that I have at this time. I'm going to see, our public consists of Debbie from the Newcastle News, and I have your packet, Debbie. But do you have any questions or concerns?
I do. Can someone explain this Steel Light Expansion Phase Two project? Is that what they broke ground for? Is that something different?
No, that's, that was phase one that they broke ground for.
So this is something different?
This is, this is a second building.
Can you explain what it is?
It's, it's a warehouse. They need more space, so they got to build another building.
No, any dimensions or anything or?
You were there that day, I think. Did you cover it? It was real cold.
That's what I'm asking. That was groundbreaking.
That was for phase one.
So this is for phase two?
Yeah, they're building another building on that same site for phase two. So there'll be two buildings.
And it's another warehouse building?
Yeah.
Anything more about it, like how much it's going to cost or?
No, I think Ben or Diane would have that.
How much is left in the Affordable Housing Fund after this allocation?
I'll have to check. Eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven.
But we're going to take it, what do we give to the other?
Fifteen.
The ramp equal fifteen.
Fifteen and fifteen years, so that's what we're.
So there's about fifty thousand left?
Yeah.
Approximately. And, and Debbie, as you know, these two organizations, traditionally, we've given to them in the past.
So when you don't give them the money, what happens to the funds that are in there? Just stay there?
They continue to build.
And that, that's also the money we gave to Orange Services for the the homeowner, homeowners, but it's on hold right now. The homeowners' mortgage assistance.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what it's called.
Okay. And the redevelopment grant that you were talking about, Chris, or, I'm sorry.
Oh, the facade grant?
The facade program?
Yeah.
No, I had, I was aware there was one for the city and one for Elwood City, but.
This is different.
Is this a new one or?
They did it two years ago, I believe. I was a commissioner the last time they did it. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, but you have to match the twenty-five thousand dollar grant. And it's run through the Redevelopment Authority. So it is different. This would be besides whatever, New Wilmington or Elwood City or anywhere else. This would, to my understanding, anywhere in the county can get this grant, as long as they have.
It's a new program? I mean, for the whole county?
Yes. They did it two years ago.
We didn't grant it, but it's still now, but.
That's the reason I brought it up.
Okay, it's twenty-two years.
Well, it would, it would have to have been discussed at the Redevelopment Authority meeting. It's somebody administered. They administered it specifically us here. But I wanted to bring it up because.
So would Amy have more of her?
Yes, absolutely. Or Rebecca.
I'm, I'm saying you're, and she is here.
Amy and Rebecca, because we just want to get that word out. I've got your packet when we're done. Thank you, Debbie. Closing comments from my colleagues. Mr. Sanada?
Chairman, thank you for an efficient meeting.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kennedy, any closing comments? Thank you, appreciate that. Vanessa or Joe, anything maybe we've forgotten or overlooked? All right, we thank you both. Appreciate everybody being here today. And again, we will re-convene in two weeks as a Board of Commissioners. Thank you all. May I please have a motion adjourned?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you all. Those in favor of adjourned, please say aye, aye, post same sign, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. I hope you'll, you'll turn us on.